Permit request for a public hearing from Ocean State Joblot for an 87.5 square foot sign. At 6:50, we have another public hearing for the Scenic Road Special Permit at 72 Farquhar Road. It's a joint public hearing with the Tree Warden. At 6:55, we have another waiver of site plan for Dragonfly Ibis Planet Fitness at 178 Main Street.
This conference will now be recorded.
That's right. At 7:00 PM, we'll have a waiver of site plan request for Deep Roots Distillery at 559 Main Street. Following that, we'll have the town planner update, then old and new business, then adjournment. We don't have any A and R? We don't have any minutes to approve?
No, we have no minutes either. They're a little lengthy this time around.
All right. Maybe we could start with your report then until 6:55.
Sure. So our next meeting day is October 26. You will have a proposal that evening for conversion of the former Rovese's Restaurant into Artist Live Work Studios. It's the same family that recently converted for 84 Main Street, and we will be getting those packets out to you soon. It is already posted online if you want to take a look at the plans. October 28 is the special town meeting, and that will be held at 7:00 PM at Tantascwa High School. And we have, I should have brought the book to show you, but the codification project is finished. It actually came out very nice. And Janay and I have a meeting next week with General Code to make all the necessary changes to our town website, so that will be up on the website. So thankfully, that is done. Oh, show and tell, we have it right there.
Ooh, oh, it's heavy.
It is heavy.
I know, it's good.
It is heavy, but they, it came out pretty nice, so we're pretty happy with that.
Take a look.
And I think that is about all that I have. Just as a reminder, I'll be out of the office the rest of the week, attending the New England Planning Conference. Janay will be in the office. And I have two more minutes to kill, so.
Okay. Yeah, I know everyone's aware of it, but one of the big features of this General Code, you know, charter bylaw and so forth, is the searchability and so forth on the website. I mean, it really is a nice feature where you can go in there and really look up things pretty quickly and find all the information. So it's going to be, I think, a real benefit to have that on the website.
I think so, too. And actually, residents, if they don't want to come through the town and want to purchase a copy of the bylaw, they can go directly through General Code, or they could go on and print a PDF of, you know, whatever section they would like. So I think people, if they don't need a certified copy, might find that useful.
Yeah, it's very helpful. And Charlie, I know you also know that Jean put an awful lot of work into this to get this thing up and running, so we really appreciate that.
Well done, Jean. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Janay, I couldn't have done it without Janay.
Yes.
I'll say that for sure. Nothing good comes out of our office without Janay, I'll say that much, so.
Thirty seconds or so. There you go.
I have the benefit of not being able to see the clock with these glasses on, so it looks like 6:35 to me.
Pretty close. Okay, I'll call it 6:35. Do you want to read the public notice for the public hearing?
In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public meeting, hearing, at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:35 PM, on the application of OSJ in Sturbridge, Mass., 375 Commerce Park Road, North Kingstown, Rhode Island. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to Article 17, Section 300-17.5E of the zoning bylaw regarding the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is specifically allowed in the bylaw. The applicant is proposing an 87.5 square foot replacement building sign, where 32 square foot is allowed under the signed bylaw. The property is located at 178 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts. A copy of the application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash planning dash board backslash pages backslash recent dash filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the applicant packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided to the public, the meeting, hearing, will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public who wish to participate remotely may listen or watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash town-administrator backslash pages backslash how-access-virtual-meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much. Jean, do you have any introduction you want to make to this?
Yes, I do. With us this evening is Tony Lapo from American Sign, and he has proposed, or actually, I should say, Ocean State Joblot, has requested to be able to change out their sign, which is rather small right now, to put something on the building that's kind of more in scale with the facade of the building and will be much more in keeping with the other signs that we're seeing start to get proposed in the plaza and actually be very similar to the Shaw's sign there. If you notice in this rendering here, there's, you can see a bit of the Tractor Supply sign. And as you can see, at this distance, you really, I mean, you know the Tractor Supply logo, we know it's there, but to somebody driving by, they may not even realize that it's Ocean State Joblot or that it's Tractor Supply. So Tony has gone to the Design Review Committee, and they have approved the design of the sign. Actually, the sign that they are proposing is very similar to what's on the building now. It's really just their lettering, and it will be externally illuminated with the gooseneck lighting that you see above the sign. The bylaw does allow the planning board to grant special permit when it can help with visibility, when it won't cause a nuisance, or because of the location of the building being set further back, et cetera. I have all of that criteria on page two of my report for you. And in this instance, I do believe that the sign meets the criteria. I would recommend approval of this. And then for comparison's sake, for the board, I did, I know usually when we do signs, it's hard for you to tell, you know, what is this like? So I tried to give you some examples from in the community. So the Famous Footwear Store at the center at Hobbs Brook is 84 square feet, so this would be very close to that size. The Marshall sign is 125 square feet. So just to kind of give you a couple of examples there, so you can better visualize what this may look like. Tony is on the go-to meeting and can provide you any additional information or answer any questions that the board may have.
Great. Thank you, Jean. Tony, do you have anything you'd like to add now, or?
Hi, thank you. Well, I think Jean did a great job about presenting this for us. Just basically, Ocean State Joblot's been a long-term property owner in that plaza. They have a considerably large-sized space, and as you can see, currently a very small sign. Ocean State has been, currently doing a lot of upgrades to their stores and to their signage, and we've asked for this site just to have, like Jean said, a sign that's a little bit more in proportion with the facade size and something where they could be visible out from the street, so people know that they're in there and can see them and turn. And it's again a similar type of sign, just basically a larger replacement with the existing gooseneck lighting. That's really it.
Great. Thank you very much. Dane, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Jeff?
No questions.
Sue?
No questions.
Wally?
No question.
Everyone's all set. Okay, does anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
I'll just check the public line, too.
Okay.
Is there anyone on the public line that has a question or a comment on the signed proposal by Ocean State Joblot for property located at 178 Main Street? No.
Yes, question?
I have a question. What's the comparison to the other signs in that development?
The Tractor Supply one, right next to it, is 30 square feet. I don't have the square footage of the Shaw's sign offhand, but I could certainly look that up and give you a call back.
Just think if it's the same comparison for the rest of the signs, then it should stay the same size. I would recommend that.
I would say this is probably a little bit smaller than what the Shaw's sign is on that building.
Well, Shaw's probably has three times the space, right?
Sure.
Just remember, if one does it, then they all do it.
Right. Could you identify yourself for the public hearing, please?
Josh Katone, One Cedar Pond Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I think this is pretty consistent with what we saw in the renderings from Planet Fitness. I think it's actually quite a bit smaller than what the new signs are that we'll see coming in the next couple of weeks. And we were unable to locate the permit from when Shaw's was constructed. We did try to locate that sign, and were unable to locate it. So the best I could do is contact Shaw's and see if I could get a square footage.
That's fine. Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, no one? Could I have a motion then to grant the special permit?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So the next.
All right, Tony, you're all set. We will send you a written decision.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
You, too.
Okay. So the next public hearing is at 6:50.
Yes.
All right.
So I could just do the New England Cold update.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
So within your packet, you have an inspection report from Summit Engineering and Survey Incorporated, and this is on the New England Cold project. So as you can see, and I actually sent you a second report today with some additional photographs. So really, the site has been cleared. They have built the, or are working on the bridge going into the property. As of today's report, they've repaved the driveway from the neighboring property that they were using on a temporary basis. Sturbridge Metallurgical, excuse me, they have repaved their entire lot as they were required to do per their agreement. So that's been done. The retaining wall has been built, and they've been backfilling that. And they have been forming up the footings for the loading dock and other areas. So there's really been a tremendous amount of work done in a very short amount of time. So they were sending us quarterly reports, but now that activity is really underway. I've requested that they go to weekly, even if it's just a quick email report, so that the board and myself can be kept up to date on what's going on on-site without having to visit the site every day. And then a few more minutes, I can also update you on the DeLeo Gas Project that was next to this. So I went out and did a site visit with Rebecca Gendrow, our conservation agent, about three weeks ago. We did find some inconsistencies with the approved plans in terms of a swale that was actually at a higher elevation than the basin. So we've asked their engineer to take a look at that and to do some corrective grading. But otherwise, the site's looking pretty stable now. The areas where we had all of the erosion rills over the summer are pretty well vegetated. There's still a little bit of evidence of overtopping on one area, and I think that's due to the way that it's graded as well. So we've asked the engineer to take a look at that and certify those grades for us. But all in all, it's shaped up very nice. They have mowed the lawn, they have replaced all of the dead plantings. When I was out there, I did notice another tree has died. So I think definitely in the spring, we'll have to go back out there and see what's survived through the winter. I'm not sure why they're not having too much luck, but it was very rainy July and then a very hot August, so perhaps that's contributed. But all in all, it's in much better condition than it was a month ago.
Very good. Great. Okay. Well, I guess we could move along and try to see if we can get all the new business out of the way. Dane, do you have any old or new business?
I do not.
Jeff?
No.
Sue?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't.
Wally?
Chris?
Mike? Okay.
You know, Charlie, I just thought of some new business.
Sure.
Maybe we could tighten the timing on some of these for the agendas. I've been in a lot of municipalities where all town business happens at one block of time, and all applicants are just notified about 6:30. And usually, we don't have too many people waiting, but we seem to, more frequently than not, be killing a few minutes here and there. Is that something we could discuss?
We can, but I've, so what I've tried to do is during COVID, I tried to be a little more generous when we started meeting back in person because, just out of respect for people sitting close to each other. So I realize it's giving us a little bit of uncomfortable moments, and I probably overestimated the time needed for the sign. So I'll try to keep more of an eye on that. I think the biggest issue is if it's something that there's a lot of abutters interested, and they're trying to fit into kind of a small space. So if you have them too close together, you have one group here with the other group filtering in. But I think point well taken. I mean, this was a little bit too long for a sign.
Making an agenda is a lot of an art.
It is, definitely. And after 32 years, you still don't get it right, because you never know. Sometimes it's the, what I think will be the simplest little things turn into the lengthiest discussions.
Well, it's usually when I start asking questions. I'm guilty of it.
No, I didn't say that. But no, we will, we'll take a look at that.
Excellent. Well, that's all the new business I have.
Very good. Okay.
I could update on another thing. So Habitat for Humanity had their groundbreaking, I think it was about two weeks ago. So they're building the home on Cedar Street, and that's with the land that the town donated to them for the purpose of creating affordable housing. So that was a nice ceremony. We went, Wally was there representing the Housing Partnership, and a couple other members of the partnership were there. Mr. Bridges said a few words, and looking forward to seeing that project move along.
Very good. Great.
So that was just groundbreaking in the fall-ish. Are they going to be doing work through the winter to finish up in the spring?
They are. They had actually cleared the site, got the well in place and things like that. It was just their official groundbreaking ceremony that day.
Nice.
Jean, can I ask you?
Sorry. I'm not, I promise.
Sure, go ahead.
What kind of timeline on that, like what their progressions are going to be? Because it seems that they did get in there and clear a little bit, and then kind of, you know? Other than that, I just wanted, I was just curious.
Well, that can.
Go ahead, sure.
So that is kind of the case, is they got in there and they cleared, and they got the well in, and then, waiting for a building permit. So that's, that's kind of been the whole, now they should move along at a pretty steady pace with the idea of hopefully getting the foundation in and getting it buttoned up for the winter, so that they can have, yeah, as you know, they do a lot of it with, or most of, all of it with volunteer construction. So they'll have different crews coming in, hopefully over the winter, and being able to work on the inside, and then finish up the outside, hopefully next spring.
Yeah. I might have to come in and talk to you, maybe I can get the guys to volunteer a couple days over there.
That would be awesome. Absolutely.
Yeah, this is the second project we've had.
Yes, yep.
The first one took quite a while.
Took quite a while. About two years, I think it took on the last one. So I think as funding and labor permit, they move along.
Yeah. Yeah, I think on the other one, you know, part of that time was certainly the problem we had in getting the land transferred to, going through the process with that. Okay, it looks like we have 6:50 PM, so.
Okay. In accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3 to through 4, and Chapter 40, Section 15C, and the Sturbridge General Bylaw, Chapter 230, Scenic Roads and Chapter 270, Trees, the Sturbridge Planning Board and Sturbridge Tree Board will hold a joint public hearing at the Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:50 PM, on the Scenic Road application of the Sturbridge Trails Committee for property located at 72 Farquhar Road in Sturbridge. The applicant requests a scenic road special permit for tree removal necessary for shared use path and utility pole relocation. The applicant proposes the removal of the following trees, a 24-foot red oak and a 24-foot white pine. The trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objection to their removal must be submitted in writing to the Tree Warden prior to or during the hearing. The mailing address for the Tree Warden, Town of Sturbridge, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566, or email tkrane@sturbridge.gov. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided to the public, the meeting, hearing, will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public who wish to participate remotely may listen and/or watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television, Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. Special information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at sturbridge.gov backslash town-administrator backslash pages backslash
Very good. Thank you. Jean, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Yes, so here this evening, you have, representing the Trails Committee, Mr. Tom Chamberlain, and you have our Tree Warden, Tony Crane. And the removal is necessary to allow the pole to be relocated from one side of the road to the other. And the reality is, the trees don't need to be moved for the pole, they need to be moved for the wire. So if you went out there and you viewed the trees, you'd note that the tree needs to be placed in its new location, and then the wire needs to be strung to the next pole, and it would therefore go through the trees. So that's why they need to be removed. We did receive staff comment from Rebecca Gendrow, and she had indicated a notice of intent had been submitted for the entire project, and that has been approved now at the last Conservation Commission meeting. So I have no concerns with this request. Mr. Chamberlain and Mr. Crane are both here to provide further information or answer any questions.
Anything you'd like to add at this point, or?
So briefly, in submitting this with Jean, I didn't realize that there are some new members on the board that may not have been fully aware of the Grand Trunk Trail Project. So that's why I handed you out the brochures. The brochures are a little bit dated, but that's just reflective of also how slow this project is moving. There hasn't been a real need to update it until these kind of projects finally get going. So in this particular case, that section of Farquhar Road was elevated as part of the construction of the Westville Lake Project. And back in the late 50s, when that work was done, the, you know, how wide do we need the road? That's how high and wide we make it, and, you know, we're good to go. Now we're coming along, you know, 50, 60 years later and saying, well, now we want to put a shared-use path along the side of the shoulder of the road, and so we're confined to keeping everything on the top of the flat part of that raised area. And so that's creating a problem with the pole, the shared-use path, the street, et cetera. So working with National Grid, our first request was to see if they could just move the pole back off of the shared-use path, but they said because the topography starts dropping off pretty significant, that just wouldn't work, you know, for their pole, for stability, to hold the wires up because of the angle, et cetera. So they came up with two options for relocating the poles. One is the one that's before you, the one pole with a kicker pole, and that still requires us to remove the two trees. The other one was two poles without a kicker pole, but the wires and the trees would still be in conflict. So we tried to work with National Grid to see if we could, you know, what our options were, and this just came out to be the best single one-pole option. But the trees themselves are in the way for the wire, the proper clearance, because they need to set the pole back at minimum of three feet off the edge of the pavement. And so that's what's kicking everything back off the road. And so here we are with the request before you tonight. The Trail Committee has reviewed the requirements of the town. I'll let Tony, you know, speak as to the condition of the trees, but we've agreed to do some replicative planting, which will most likely happen at our Riverlands parking lot. Again, because of the confines of the street, we can't really repaint trees right in that immediate area. And the rest of the trail work is through the woods, and we're only taking out the trees we absolutely need, so there's not like there's a lot of other open space to plant trees. But with the new Riverlands parking lot, we already have to replant a couple trees there because of the tree removals we had there, but the size and scope of the parking lot work, we should be able to get a couple more trees in there for the compensatory loss of the value of the trees.
Great.
That we're taking down.
Tony, anything to add, or else?
Yeah, just real quickly, and I'm not a great public speaker, but I understand why the pole needed to be relocated, and certainly the trees are in the way. I can tell you, I've looked at both trees. One of them is already, the white pine is already in decline, and quite honestly, would have to be cut down sooner or later anyway. Tom and I have already, well, the Trails Committee and I have already met with the compensation package. We had one meeting last week, and we have a plan in place to compensate right tree in the right place, which is obviously not that street. But certainly, I'll make sure that things are done properly, and Tom's on board with that as well, the Trails Committee is on board with that as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Dane, any questions, comments?
No.
Jeff?
No questions.
Sue?
I have a question. You take down those trees, and in the report, it was recommended that the stump stay in the root system to stabilize the land from conservation?
Yes.
You don't remove them. Is that going to be a walking path, though, on the side of Farquhar for the trail?
So the, where the side that we're moving the trees from is not the side that the shared-use path will be on. It'll be on the other side of the street.
Oh.
Okay, so there shouldn't be any, yeah.
I understand why I was asking.
Right, walking on that side.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Wally?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Chris, no? Mike? Okay. Anyone in the public have any questions, comments? Can I check the line, or?
Oh, sorry. Sleep on the job tonight. Is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to the application for the tree removal in front of 72 Farquhar Road? No?
Okay, great. Could I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Dane?
Second.
Second. Jeff? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, no one? So could I have the motion then to grant the special permit for the removal of the two trees as described?
Some.
Chris? Mike? Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, no one? Very good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next, we have.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for coming in. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a waiver of site plan request from Dragonfly Ibis Planet Fitness at 178 Main Street. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes, we do have John and Steve on the meeting. John, can you hear us?
Yep, I hear you.
Okay. All right. So we, you have an application before you this evening for waiver of site plan approval, and this is for Dragonfly Ibis Sturbridge.
And this is for Dragonfly Ibis, Sturbridge. And yet we call at, one of your last meetings, you approved the division of the former J.C. Penney space into potentially three or four other storefronts, depending on who the ultimate users may be. And as we know, one of the major tenants in the center of the space will be Planet Fitness. So they are finalizing the plans and they plan to apply for a building permit somewhere around November first. And so they're making preparations to be able to bring in an office trailer so that they can have Planet Fitness staff on site, so that they can take membership applications and fees, provide information about the programs and the memberships that they're offering, also potentially applicants for positions that they might need to apply for. And the office trailer will go in the parking lot. Janay has just brought the plan up on the screen, the area that's marked in yellow. And they're also requesting that a building sign be allowed to be placed on the side of the office trailer, and they have requested a temporary banner. My recommendation would be that you approve the location of the office trailer with the building sign. But I, number one, I'm not sure where the temporary banner would be posted, that it wouldn't be in the way of other things. And number two, I think I would like to see how visible this is before we add that secondary sign. I think it's a little unusual that we would do a sign on the office trailer and then also a banner on the ground. I think if this isn't visible enough, then a more appropriate application may be for a temporary sandwich board sign that we've allowed in, in front of other businesses that maybe could go out on the tree belt during the day to attract people to come in and then be brought in at night when they close up. So that's my recommendation. John is on the call this evening and he can give you more detail than I've just given you and answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, thank you. John?
Yeah, sure, thank you, Jean. I appreciate everybody taking time to meet tonight about this. On the call as well as Steve Anetia, who is the operator and the future tenant for the space, and Steve could give some more color. Just taking a quick step back regarding Jean's synopsis of our proposal, yes, we are looking to submit plans in early November for the demising of the J.C. Penney space into three new tenant bays and the existing catalog space. And part of that application will also include a, you know, a complete reskin of the facade as well per, you know, the prior DRC meetings. Part of the process is, as Jean elaborated on, was basically being able to get pre-enrollment for the Planet Fitness space and obviously signage is at a premium there. The additional issue that we're coming up against as well is that we did receive DRC approval for the new monument sign. We are going to be submitting for that probably early next week. So the shopping center, which includes our neighbors at Ocean State Job Lots, will temporarily be without monument signs as that construction happens. So signage is going to be at a premium. And Steve, if you want to maybe talk about the signage that you're typically putting on the trailer and also, you know, the temporary, you know, either H or sandwich board signage that, you know, could potentially be allocated here.
All right, John, thank you. And thank you all for taking the time to hear us tonight. Appreciate the work we've done with you so far. It's been wonderful working with the town of Sturbridge. So I'm the Vice President of Development at the franchisee who owns this location. Just so you folks are aware, typically, this is actually very toned down. Typically, the entire trailer is required to be wrapped by the franchisor. So you would see an entire wrap on the trailer with additional information and effectively prototype photographs of the interior of a standard Planet Fitness. So it would be covered, you know, the whole trailer would be covered. You wouldn't see any surface of the office trailer at all. And then this is a compromise on behalf of the franchisor without which I don't know that we will be able to proceed with the location. They require us to do a certain amount of pre-sale, a sixty-day pre-sale, so that we can try to ramp up our membership prior to officially opening the club. In this particular location, we face the additional challenge of the fact that we are going to be constructing our facade at the same time as we're constructing the club. Sometimes we get the facade up a little bit earlier so that folks see the facade, you know, before we are open and during pre-sale. That may not be, there may not be an opportunity for that here. So this signage is critical. We actually, I know you mentioned an A-frame. Typically, we would use an A-frame additionally to offer specific information to our customers in that it would be the offerings that we're promoing for the memberships at the particular gym. So this is actually a reduction of about one, I would say probably one tenth to one fifteenth of our normal signage.
Just for the information of the board, the original proposal was a complete wrapped office trailer, which I rejected because I find nowhere in the bylaw where anything like that would be permitted. And it would be highly unusual and actually inconsistent with some of our zoning enforcement practices very recently, actually. So just to let the board know, that was their original proposal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I should say, what you have before you this evening does meet the size requirements of the signed by law. The banner proposed actually does meet the size requirements for a banner of twelve square feet, but I believe it says it needs to be posted on a building. So, you know, unless they were putting one on one side and one on the other, my initial recommendation does stand. I understand the need for Planet Fitness to be able to get the word out there, but I also think that we have to be fair to our other businesses in the community, that, you know, we treat everybody pretty consistently and strictly when it comes to signage. So that was the reason for my decision-making process in this case.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, does the proponent have anything else they'd like to add at this point?
I would just reiterate that, you know, as you all probably know, the franchisor has stringent requirements and, you know, this could be a make or break situation for the business in Sturbridge. I just want the board to be aware of that because I have, quite frankly, I used to be with the franchisor. I was employed by the franchisor for four years prior to coming here. I was their real estate attorney. And I have gone to bat for this, to try to get this approved as modified. I've gotten a lot of pushback and have been able to get to this point and hope that the board would consider that in the interest of, you know, being open for business in the town of Sturbridge. I certainly appreciate the planner's recommendation, but I think it is critical and I think this is going to be a great business for your community. We're going to, we're planning on being heavily involved in the community. We're excited to join, join your town and we can't wait to get started. But this is critical and also the temporary nature, I think, is something to consider. We're talking about sixty days. You know, certainly know that there's some leeway there with your eight days in your code and whatnot, but it's just critically important and I just ask the board to consider that. Thank you again so much for your time.
Okay. Well, you know, it appears, you know, certainly that the wrapped trailer is not really an option. But as Jean said, I mean, if there is some discussion about possibly the banner at some point, I guess that would be something that could be considered.
You know, I think that if they were proposing to put a banner on one side of the office trailer and the sign on the other side, then I think that might be more palatable. But I think the latest information that I received was the sign on the office trailer and the banner out by the street on two posts, which I don't see in the bylaw where that's permitted. And again, I would say that it would have to, that's a twelve-square-foot banner, it would have to be replaced with a twelve-square-foot A-frame sign, which that could be accommodated. So I think it's the same square footage. You know, I understand the applicant's position, but I just find it very hard to believe that not being able to put up a banner is a make or break for a company coming into a community when we've worked very hard to accommodate everything that we possibly can and keeping it, you know, on a fair and equal playing field with all of our other businesses. So, you know, I think that's my primary responsibility here. And I think the recommendation that I've made is a fair one. I think if the board wanted to be in a position of compromise, you could approve the banner on one side and the sign on the other side.
Very good, thank you, Jean.
Mr. Crane, could I just ask, when you say on one side, do you mean on both facing the same side of, on a trailer, but on one side of the door? Or are you talking about two different sides of the trailer completely?
Two different sides of the trailer would be my recommendation, if you have a two-sided.
Yeah, I guess logistic, that might work. And I'm sorry, now, you know, just from the franchisor's perspective, it's not a matter of just not allowing a banner on the side of the road, it's that the wrap wasn't allowed under any circumstances. So the compromise has already been made by them. I'm just letting you folks know where their position lies. It's not, I'm not trying to threaten the board or anything like that, I'm just letting you folks know that what I've heard from them. You know, we have stringent requirements for these pre-sales, unfortunately.
Sure, I respect their position and we have stringent requirements as we're applying the bylaw as well, so.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you. Dan, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, so we're talking about the location of the trailer. We're talking about a banner that's going on the trailer and we're talking about another banner that's going to go on the building? Do I have that straight?
A sign on, a sign on the trailer, a thirty-square-foot sign, which complies with the bylaw. And then their other proposal was a twelve-square-foot banner that would have been put out by the street, which I don't see in the bylaw where that's allowed, so.
I tend to agree with you on that. When you said it was a banner supported by two posts down by the street, that's not a banner anymore. It'd be different if it was a vinyl banner strung up on the facade after their improvements are done, before they can get a sign up. That I would see differently. The location of the trailer that's shown in yellow, first of all, was impossible to see on my packet, but we're comfortable with that location from a traffic circulation, emergency vehicles, fire trucks, et cetera.
Yes, we are. So this application's gone out to all the staff and no one noted any concerns with the location. And because that side of the building is basically empty at this point, we're not getting a lot of traffic flow over there. In fact, if you go out there, you'll see very few cars parked there.
Agreed. My gut would be that that would have been in the hard corner as far away as possible, but then I thought a second about it and there's literally nothing happening over there, so why not? So my question to the applicants is, the trailer access happens not from that drive aisle side, but from those head-in parking space side?
Yeah, that can be accommodated, yes.
Okay, so we're not going to have people milling inside a drive aisle as people are trying to get away from the Shaw's Grocery Store and go out that way past some of the traffic?
Yeah, no, I think the preference would be to have the entrance, to your point, on the other side of the door, yeah.
And then there's going to be a thirty-square-foot sign on the trailer, I assume either on the long side facing the entryway or the short side facing the street?
Yeah, wouldn't, short side, I think, it would probably be the long side.
Okay, I feel like I understand what you're asking and I don't have any further questions.
Very good, thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, hi. How many other locations does the franchisee own, Planet Fitnesses, in Massachusetts?
Currently open fifty-one.
Okay. And can you cite to any other instance whereby the franchisor pulled out for this reason?
We've never had this situation really occur before.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's usually pretty straight, the wraps are usually pretty widely accepted.
But I understand where you guys are coming from. Yep.
Okay, Sue?
Okay.
Okay. Wally, I'll say. Mike? Okay, very good. Does anyone have any, I guess, no other questions?
Mr. Crane, Mr. Crane, could I ask one more question of the board? Did you mention that an A-frame would be acceptable in lieu of the banner on the roadway?
That is what I said, yes. We do allow for one temporary sign per business and we have A-frame specifications in our zoning bylaw that would allow for a twelve-square-foot sign to be placed out and brought in in the evening or secured to the specifications of the building commissioner so that it doesn't become a projectile, especially with snow coming, we need to be concerned about that.
Yeah, and that doesn't require special approval that's within the zoning regs?
It's within the zoning regs, as is the banner, but the zoning regs call for a banner to be affixed to a building, which was not what you were proposing.
Okay, and that's the exception here, that's why we need approval.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much for your explanation, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay, and could I have a motion then to approve the waiver of site plan approval with the four conditions listed?
So moved.
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose, no one?
I just want to point a clarification, is that with a sign on one side and the banner on the other side of the building, if they desire, and if not, the sign and the A-frame?
Right, that's fine with us. And this, the A-frame would be, you know, per the bylaws anyway, you'd have to have the proper permit.
Okay.
Okay, great. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, next we have a waiver of site plan request from Deep Roots Distillery at five fifty-nine Main Street. Want to go over that, Jean?
Yes.
All right, so this evening we have with us Erica and Keith Deverin, and I'm sorry, their new partner, you did email me his name and I did not mark it down.
Tom King.
Tom King. And they are from Deep Roots Distillery, USA. And they are actually proposing to open a distillery in the Mill Yard Marketplace. And I'll provide you a brief overview and then Erica will go over kind of the nuts and bolts of the operation. I think they're planning to do some really interesting things in the space. So as you are aware, the Mill Yard Marketplace has been there for many years, started out as a factory many, many years ago, and then was converted into a mixed-use building. And there's only a hundred parking spaces, which doesn't come anywhere close to what our current regulations would require. We do have a section in the bylaw that says if you're located in the commercial tourist district, same or similar uses can continue to exist in these spaces and, without the necessity to create additional parking. So when somebody like Deep Roots comes along, we need to go through this waiver process and because they require an alcohol license, we need to at least do some due diligence to make sure that we're not setting people up for failure, number one, or, number two, that they won't be so successful that other businesses in the facility may not have appropriate parking. So as part of that analysis, Janay has prepared a parking analysis for you, and that was based on day of the week and hour of the day for every business in the facility. So if you look at her analysis that she's attached in your packet, I think the highest number of parking spaces that would be required at any one time would be a hundred and thirty-eight spaces. And those occur about fourteen hours out of the entire week. That the actual calculations using today's standards would run somewhere between a hundred and thirteen and a hundred and thirty-eight. But that would be assuming that the Sturbridge Flea Market has twenty-seven customers, because if I calculate it on square footage, they need twenty-seven parking spaces. That would also assume that there are ten cars parked for Manny's Taqueria and that there are, I think, seventeen parked for the Stone Sparrow. And I think as someone who frequents that building for different things, whether it's, you know, paint and sip or getting a tea, or we had some awesome scones the other day, I think it's very rare that you see that the entire parking lot is full. I think even All Truest Brewing required thirty-three parking spaces. And I think it's, you know, really pretty rare that we see thirty-three cars there for that use. And so for this particular use, under current calculations, they would need fourteen parking spaces. It's a relatively small operation that they're proposing and I think it's a nice fit in the district. I think it would bring tourists into the community to, you know, maybe check out the distillery, go to a brewery. We have, you know, a lot of nice little places like that where people can kind of, you know, bounce around to different ones or, you know, go on tours. So I think it would make a nice addition to the district and to the community. I think that they have a really exciting proposal. I do think that the parking can be managed. I think there will be sufficient parking spaces. Not to say that maybe on a Saturday, it might be crowded in the evening, but I think that it will work out. Or if there's not a parking space, I'm a big believer that somebody will go to the next restaurant or brewery down the road. So I would recommend that you approve this waiver of site plan and allow them to open in this facility and add another little venue for our community that people can visit. venue for our community that people can visit.
Very good.
And with that, Erica can explain what they're proposing.
Thank you, Jean. So Deep Roots Distillery is the three of us. We're going to be a craft distillery, offering small batch craft spirits made locally and US-sourced. My husband and I have actually lived in the town of Sturbridge for 20 years now, so we wanted to bring something in town. We do not use dyes or fillers. All our products are considered natural. We want to partner with other local businesses for produce. We do a lot of unique flavoring processes. So we do a lot of fresh fruit, vegetables, things like that, and we're also required to have small bites to eat in our tasting area, so we want to partner with a couple local farms to get things like seasonal salsas and other small things that people can eat while they're tasting our spirits. The distillery will have two sides. One will be a manufacturing side, which we'll distill, taste, do our flavorings. On the other side, we want to do a tasting side, which will have, we have max seating capacity of 36, but we want to start smaller, so we're going to start with 22. People will have the opportunity to taste small samples, take part in seasonal cocktails, but we're only going to use our own spirits. So we're not going to be a full-fledged bar. We have no interest in being a bar. We want to give people an experience when they walk in, so they can come in, view how the process works. It's very scientific, which is kind of how we got into this in the first place. It wasn't about the alcohol, it was about the science behind it, and it's very interesting once you start to break it down. So we're really more about the experience. We want to walk our customers through the process, the hows and whys, and show them the local spin in our flavors, and how we're supporting other local businesses. Currently, we'd like to start renovating as soon as possible. We have a cracked beam in our ceiling, so we're not allowed in the space currently. Once the beam is fixed, we plan to go for our building permit to bring back the charm of the old mill, so we want to expose the brick, and hopefully expose the hardwood floors that are under the terrible laminate that's under there. So that's our plan. We've already obtained our federal TTB license. Our FDA registration is all set. We've gotten approval from the town for our signage in front. We've also submitted for our Massachusetts Farmers Distillers license, and that is in review status currently, so we should get that in the next few weeks. We also have already submitted our Farmers Poorers permit, which comes from the town. Our Health Department application is in review. Our Chapter 34 is in review with the Fire Department and the Building Inspector, so we're awaiting approvals on all those. And we've given samples to the DPW to get our discharge permit for any wastewater, but all of our cleaning products that we use are natural, so they didn't think that they'd have a problem with it. And then as soon as we get all of that done, we'd like to open as soon as we can.
Great, very good. Well, thank you very much. Maybe I'll sit at the other end. Mike, do you have any questions?
No, I just, the only question is, the distilling process, you're requiring like a tremendous amount of heat in that process, so just...
We use it, we use all induction, so we don't use open flame. That was your question, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Chris?
I'm all set.
Wally?
I'm all set.
Sue?
I think it's a great addition to our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great. Jeff?
No questions.
Dean?
No.
Okay, all set. Yes, you have a question? Sure.
When they were talking about the traffic...
Could you maybe come up and identify yourself?
Sure.
This is Mike.
Hello?
Yes, it is. Gosh Katone, One Cedar Pond Road, Sturbridge, Mass. My daughter dances in that building, and I didn't hear her mention the traffic from, the amount of cars that the dance studio produces on a daily basis is probably 50 cars in an hour that go in and out of there.
Just to mention that, that's all. I didn't see it in there.
It's all in, no, I didn't mention all of the businesses in there, but it is in the analysis. Actually, believe it or not, when she was approved, she was approved with six parking spaces, because her model was for parents to drop off and then come back, so they were going to have a loop to drop off. So, so I do know what, yeah.
That was my question.
Great, thank you very much.
I've seen, I've seen the parents there, too, so yes.
I'm like a school bus.
Okay, very good. We have a motion then to grant the waiver of site plan approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Sue. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, no one? Very good. Thank you very much, good luck with it, great project. Okay, I guess that's it. Nothing else to come forward? We've handled old and new business and everything else?
I've just got one comment on the last application. Janay, that parking analysis you did?
Yeah.
Amazing.
Thank you.
That was, I know sometimes I get excited about like traffic reports or something. I flipped to this, and I was like, who put this together? That was so well done, and it really does help highlight how these mixed-use buildings, sometimes on paper don't work out, but in practice they really do, with an analysis like that. So, very well done, thank you.
Good job, thank you very much.
It goes even better than that, because I sent her an email and said, I would like to compare all the parking by hour of the day and day of the week. Can you prepare a spreadsheet for the board? And when I came back, she basically had it done, so.
Well done.
Very good, thank you.
She does a great job.
Very good. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, no one? Very good. Thank you all.